Good evening, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Town Council, May 28, 2024, to order. We'll start by standing for the attendance and one more time.
The Republican members to the Republican Republicans, one nation.
Since we are hybrid, and we have a couple people missing tonight, we'll just do a quick roll call, just to kind of put on the record here, Councilor Shay.
Right here. Did you get that? Hello?
Thank you so much.
Okay, you just, you went, you guys went quiet, I can barely hear you.
Is it still very quiet?
Yes, yeah, I can, I can barely hear you, I can't, I don't know if anybody else is trying to talk.
Test one, three, test one, two, three.
Yeah, that's still pretty bad, is that Brian?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. It was good a second ago.
Is this better?
Test, 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 test.
A little, a little better, I'll, I'll just try to listen very intently.
We'll try to talk very loudly. All right. So we do have two members of council missing today. Uh, Vashir Mari is at sick and Council Buckler has a family commitment this evening. The next item on our agenda is proclamation for National Prevention Week. This comes to us from our Human Services Department, gonna make it a little bigger and I'll read it. So where is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration that sponsored National Prevention Week as a public education platform showcasing the work of communities and organizations across the country dedicated to raising awareness about the importance of substance misuse prevention and positive mental health? And whereas the goal of National Prevention Week is to involve communities in raising awareness of substance misuse and mental health issues, implementing prevention strategies and showcasing effectiveness of evidence-based prevention programs. And whereas National Prevention Week aims to foster partnerships and collaborations with federal agencies and national organizations dedicated to improving public health and promoting and disseminating quality substance misuse prevention and mental health promotion resources. And whereas the impact of mental health diagnoses and substance use disorders is apparent in our local community, National Prevention Week was created to showcase communities coming together to celebrate the possibilities and brighter futures that exist thanks to the ongoing work of prevention happening across the country. Now therefore, the Town Council on behalf of the citizens of Tolland proclaims May 12 through May 18 as National Prevention Week and calls upon our community to join us this week in supporting increased awareness of and action around mental health and/or substance use disorders year round. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Tolland to be affixed on this 14th day of May, 2024. Katie Star, our Chair of Town Council. And I would just like to shout out, thank our Public, um, or Human Services Department for all the work that they did for National Prevention Week and for bringing that to us. Item number five on our agenda is public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the Town Council with a two-minute limit. Um, if you are on Zoom and you wish to speak, you can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine. If you're in the audience and you wish to speak, we ask you to come up to the table. And everyone who wishes to speak, we ask for you to give us your name and address, and we'll start in the room.
Daniel Norris, 300 Plains Road. For more than five years now, I have been contacting members of our town government, group C, and state legislators about unregulated backyard shooting ranges, how disruptive they are to our neighborhood life, and the safety concern. Back when Tammy Nuccio was Town Council Chair, she told me that the town could not have regulations that were more strict than this state. Currently, there are no regulations from the state regarding backyard shooting ranges. Tammy Nuccio, a state rep, now states that this is up to the town. I have sent many communications to Mr. Foley, who communicated to my husband that he has passed those on to troop C. And when I spoke to troop C, they say that they enforce the regulations that exist, that hunters must be 500 feet away from the nearest building, and target shooters must be 250 feet, less than a football field, away from the nearest home, and mind you, that's from your house, not your property line. But how they're enforcing this, I don't know, because there is no, currently, there's no permit process for building a backyard shooting range. So how the town even knows where these ranges are to go and inspect them and to make sure that they are safe? So I don't really think that they really are being checked in. In May of 2024, the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania in Veris versus Stroud County ruled that the plain text of the Second Amendment does not prohibit states and their municipalities from regulating the location of shooting ranges or from prohibiting target practice in residential areas where the risk of accidental injury and death is highest. So my question to our town leaders is this, is anyone in town government willing to stop walking and talking and circle and lead on this issue and at least have a discussion about this topic? Review the current regulations that are 14 years old now? And at least discuss the safety enhancement of having a permit process to build a backyard shooting range? Thank you.
And is there, uh, Christina Plor?
Hi, guys, it wouldn't let me unmute or turn my camera on, can you hear me? Yeah, okay, Christina Plord, 101 Metcalf Road. Uh, I just wanted to come in and say, um, as public officials, I've, I've seen some things, you know, in the public eye. But I just wanted to remind you that all text messages outside your party caucus, all your emails regarding town business, they're all subject to the Freedom of Information Act. Uh, so when we find out who's behind the truth about Colleen, all those emails and text messages, you know, will be subject to the Freedom of Information Act. If you tell someone in your own party or outside your own party to go F themselves, I mean, you have that right? Um, but it's still subject to the Freedom of Information Act. Just would ask that you guys publicly denounce this behavior. Um, it's okay to think for yourself, it's okay to vote differently from who's in your own party or outside your own party. I think the doxing and the bullying needs to stop. Uh, and as you know, from the personal attacks on me when I was elected, if you asked the wrong questions or suggest any sort of negligence, uh, you get punished and shamed for it publicly, um, so maybe Colleen was asking the wrong questions. Uh, anyways, thank you to the Republican Caucus and Colleen for maintaining a bit of order. And lastly, I say this with a smile, but you can't see it, your budget is still too dang high. Thank you, guys, for everything.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room would like to speak?
In a Stephen, 689 Allen State Road. Couple of items on my agenda, but some of them have to hold since we're at two minutes. Uh, I guess I, first of all, I'd like to support um, certainly the individual in the room here who expressed concern over having shooting ranges and backyards. That, I had no idea that was even going on in this town, that's beyond alarming, especially with the type of weapons that someone can have. What I, I came here tonight to actually talk about is, oh, and I support the last caller talking about language of behavior of town council members that should be not even necessary to discuss, but whatever. I attended the last emergency or whatever it was called, budget meeting. Disappointed that, I know there can always be circumstances, but it seemed to go beyond that, that all members of the council were not here um, to actually work through that endeavor. It seems to me that, uh, you know, there's always some gamesmanship that takes place, but when it comes down to the local level, it seems as if, uh, it really should come down to people working face to face to get things done. And I guess other comments towards that meeting, um, when, when we quote past years and situations that, uh, caused budgets to be declined, we should, we should actually add some context to that and not just start quoting dates from the past. Um, when we especially talk about 2002, 2007, 2008, looking around the council table here, there's some members that were probably either in, and those that aren't here, in either grade school or middle school, um, and may not have any context as to what was going on from 2007, eight into the next few years. But at any rate, uh, it would really, um, I think, benefit everyone in this town. Um, and I'm gonna sidebar here, I know that obviously every one of you has certain constituents that voted for you for certain reasons. Um, but just to, um, say that, um, you know, no new taxes, get rid of all taxes, go zero taxes, whatever. Um, I guess that would suggest that either you're working for free, or you're not raising your prices, or, you know, you just think that no one else should get any more of an increase, et cetera. Uh, final comment is that, um, I'm sure I met my limit. Obviously, taxes figure into the desirability of a town. Uh, in my past, I've always found that home values are hugely predicated upon the school system. And to think that you can neglect the school system or carve back the school system so that it doesn't support the needs of the community, um, it's may seem astute from a year basis to maybe minimize and increase, but all you're doing is you're ripping apart the infrastructure of the school. And in the long run, what that does is that hurts your property values. So, um, I think we all have to give some thought to, uh, down the road, not just what's straight in front of us and what we think our constituents are saying, because I find it hard to believe that everyone in this town thinks that uh, taxes should just automatically be cut regardless of where that comes from. Thank you for your time.
Claudette Morehouse?
Good evening, Claudette Morehouse, 89 Merlot Way. I'm gonna be brief in asking that, um, our chairperson, Katie Stargardt, has stepped down his chair due to her six-hour budget meeting, which was horrible to watch and was nothing less than bullying and humiliating to our finance director, who has gone above and beyond helping and working for this town over her tenure. And also that Jennifer Buckley, for her nasty correspondence to councilperson Colleen regarding, um, you know, her, her votes on town council. She's an unaffiliated, yeah, she ran with the Democrats, but you do not own her. She, she ran on supporting the town as a whole. And I believe that these two people should not be and are not representative of Tolland. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? Anyone else online? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we will move on to item six, which is public hearing items, of which we have none. And, um, item seven, A, reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. I actually would like to start that one. The Birch Grove Building Committee audit has been completed. The, um, the state legislature passed the nonwithstandinging language regarding the, um, the issues, the one issue that came up during the audit, uh, to hold Tolland nonwithstandinging on that. Mr. Foley, do you know what the next steps are in completing that audit?
Wait, which, which audit is that, I'm sorry?
Birch Grove.
Well, yeah, I think the governor has to.
The governor signed it.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
So we do have to close out the commission, and I got Mike Wilkins looking into how to do that, he's done it before. Mike, if you're on. All right, talk about that.
Yeah.
But the council, to vacate the commission, but I think I want to review a lot of it, some old ones.
Sure, okay. I think, um, for Birch Grove, I would like to see us wait until the, um, payment has been made.
Everything.
Um, just to make sure that no further action is going to be required of the building committee, because I hate to see us.
We could restart it, right?
We could, but then we have to go through the whole, creating it again, so we have it in place, why not just leave it in place?
Ten-four.
Okay, excellent, so it would be good to hear, uh, when that, when the money comes in, I'm sure Lisa is eagerly awaiting the, the, the final check, but, uh, the governor did sign the nonwithstandinging, um, legislation that passed. So it's, it's all, it's all, but. All right, and, uh, Council Mary's not here, but perhaps Council, you can check, you can give us an update on the firehouse?
Yeah, first, uh, we did not have one last week, um, sure, so, that's going on there. Unfortunately, we'll finish the end of this week or lose the substantial completion. Um, it's gonna be, you know, email today. Um, they're hoping for June 15th, but we'll know more at the end of the week. It's just primarily due to of the, let me just see. The cabinets and the shower stalls, basically, and the shop shelf now in. Um, but if it does go past, and let me add, that's gonna cost the town no more, like, it's just part of the cost. Anything additional, just. But if it continues to go past the energy, we will go for or discuss it the next meeting about that. The coordinated damages, um, that's $410 a day, so that kind of gets a little bit quicker. Hopefully, we're into that, um. And then we started to talk about other stuff, so discussion regarding a platform to build in ribbon cutting ceremony at fire station 340. Ms. Madison's gonna look into that, she's already collected some data from, um, a fire marshal going around to all the different buildings and the ability to get hers for the truth and all other plaques of place, so. Um, Ryan or Lisa, did I miss anything?
No, it's punch items, um, painters are in there now, um, it's, it's, it's near done, but not done. Yep.
Yep, so, but otherwise, the pictures, um, I think are in the previous packet, and the inside looks like it's coming along really nicely and, um, something that we should be proud of when it's completed, so that's all I have on, on it.
You wanna go on and talk about your liaisons?
Yeah, sure, so, um, May 13th, Town Recreation Advisory Board meeting, unfortunately, I could not attend that meeting. Um, they still have a few opens in the three-year-old pre-school program. Um, Friday night, the duck stop ball league started, um, the dugout facility updates, the dugout at River Park has been delivered, which is great. Bents and the bullpens have been installed, and they talked about some of the, um, upper funding towards Little League. It's been approved, last council approved, building, um, and they're really looking for lifeguards. Yes, that's a statewide problem. And, um, so if you know anybody that's a lifeguard and, and hope, Mr. Watts would be more than happy. Um, but that's what I have for that. Thank you. All right.
Uh, we have, there was, there has not been planning in zoning commission meeting, um, since I last recorded. And I think the Blight Review Committee meeting was canceled, so I don't have the.
Okay, Council Shay.
So unfortunately, the, um, the Public Water Commission met, as well as the Agriculture Commission met, and their meetings, timed out quite poorly with my own schedule, so I was not able to attend either one of those, so, I'll have to give you an update when I am able to attend the next ones.
Note of mine, the Historic District Commission met on the, um, May, uh, April 4th, May 4th, sorry, um, and approved the COA. There has not been a Board of Ed Leadership meeting. But Frog has been sending out quite a bit of materials on end of session summaries. Nothing outrageously, uh, nothing outrageous in terms of end of session reporting from Frog at this point, and the Health District is working on a strategic plan. All right, I think we can move into new business. Uh, item 8.1 is a consideration of a resolution for ARPA subcommittee funding used recommendation for a total of $8,877.99.
Yes, thank you very much, um, so as, as we, you know, it's, it's, Chair Ute, or, sorry, Houseperson Utecheck said earlier that, um, we didn't meet last, this, this previous, recently ARPA meeting, but as money avails itself, we will meet and, and try to make sure that we spend all the ARPA money that we have coming to us. Uh, with that, when, when we ordered the, uh, road grader for unapproved roads, Director Lappin did a great job in saving the town a good chunk of change there. Uh, that money was put back into ARPA. Uh, one of the things, uh, that we wanted to do was build sustainability in the ice rink at Crandall's, and so, um, the liners took a beating, uh, over winter, and we don't know how much we're gonna be, be able to repair it, but we'll need a new one right away, we, but certainly some lessons learned for DPW. Uh, but in that, we want to get, um, some backup liners, uh, for the coming year, so at least we have some sustainability. If we can get two or three years out of the liner, um, we'll be in good shape. Also, I'll get more into it on the, uh, in the manager's report, but improvements to Crandall's. Uh, one is, is water quality, and with that, we want to buy an aerator, which is, uh, people would call it a fountain, but really, we want the, uh, the oxygenation of the water, uh, in there and improve the aquatic life, which will improve, improve the water quality. Uh, so those are the two acts that went to the ARPA, uh, ARPA committee and Chair Utecheck for that, and all of us unanimously decided to put it forward and recommend, um, to a council, Bruce Watt on the line, should you have any more questions?
Are there any questions?
Do we know how long the, the liners last for the steering?
It all depends, now, there's, there's, could last five years, could last 10, and that 10 would be too, I can't imagine, it would just the weight of the ice, but, um, it depends on the rules you have in place, and puffs and sticks certainly, um, can, can cause that wear and tear, so no, there's just so many uh, determining factors, but we're hoping this gets us, the total of these gets us up here 10 years, was our thinking at our.
Okay. Uh, and then just one question, uh, with respect to the town, I think you hit on it, but this will actually improve the water quality, correct? It's not, I mean, it'll be visually nice, but also does, it helps improve the water.
Sure, and that was, that, the, 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 the visual was not, and at any point, an idea, in fact, they offered an LED light package, no, thank you, we just want the iteration, um, for any of us that grew up in Crandall's, anyone can tell you the water quality needs improvement, so, um, we'll hope to have that this year, and then I'll get into some of the other improvements when they're open and such.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The, uh, the proposal for the aerator, the number of assumptions on it, are, is our poll works going to be meeting all the assumptions that are as part of this proposal, like replacing the pavers, trenching, timer control, insulation?
All that, you know, between Scott and Bruce are basically running the whole thing, uh, Scott's very for this, this project, here's electrical infrastructure uh, that we're gonna have to do, um. It, it's about two weeks to order the electric stuff that we need, the, uh, the aerator's in stock, but some of the electric is about two weeks out, so, um, should it be approved tonight, we'll, we'll start moving from there, but Scott's, uh, much of this is his plan and his idea, at least in the construction part, we should be able to save money, thanks to him, as you say.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Is there a motion then to approve the draft resolution for Agenda item 8.1? By Council Noonan, is there a second? I think it was by Council Moran, is there any further discussion? We're gonna just do a roll call vote, Council Shay?
Aye.
Council Noonan?
Aye.
Council Utecheck?
Aye.
Council Moran?
Aye.
I'm also acknowledge that passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is 8.2, consideration of a resolution to declare uh, the attached list of equipment and vehicles a surplus property within the town and Board of Education.
Thank you, um, so, a lot of this is old equipment, a pet peeve of mine is equipment, let alone extra old equipment, so, um, it probably should have been done a couple town managers ago, uh, but this is a, was a pretty big, uh, project of ours going around, uh, looking for equipment that just uh, was sitting idle, as you know, we, we were able to get a quad to the Conservation Commission, uh, to them, as well as John had an extra trailer, he was able to give the Conservation Commission, and they have a grant, it's not the Conservation Commission, it's the Conservation Board, sorry, um. They really get a grant for a land, large landscaping trailer to keep, I believe those items in, so, and they, you know, that is just a, a great organization doing volunteer work uh, on our trails here in town. Uh, at any rate, uh, we found a lot of equipment that we're able to, uh, get rid of, and this is a part of the process, in order to do that, uh, we need approval, um, from Town Council. Uh, in, in doing some of this, I, I do, um, I am gonna try to get it with permission, uh, a golf cart for the Agricultural Commission, uh, the person, the, the Celebration Committee, and as well as the Rec Department, one golf cart for all three to utilize, um, for events, they can, they do such a great job. It's a lot of stuff to move around now.
You wanna buy a new one, or?
We don't know.
Okay.
You know, it was, you know, we have to do it by the numbers, you know, if, if it didn't, I'd bring stuff right down to a place and swap it out, we can't do it like that. So it has to go through here, and, and, you know, I would guess under 10,000, under 8,000, you know, I, you know, you gotta use one, be fine, we don't care, as long as, you know, we don't look for the best.
Okay, so you want, you want, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be clear, I said, you're gonna, if we approve this, these items would be sold and the money would be used towards the golf cart?
In theory, but not, not directly, Lisa can hash out how we would pull that off, but it not, it's not really.
Okay. Excellent.
I wish.
Sure. No, okay. Any questions with the town manager, can I flip her in?
So, um, does, does all the surplus equipment get sold, or is there something that's just not?
If, like, uh, if, if, like, say a vehicle is not able to sit on, it's just a heat built to give us X amount of dollars for parts and scraps, and that's usually the lowest that can go. Um, it's, it's run through, uh, the sound auction process through my wilkinson, who can answer any questions uh, in regards to that, but, uh, he has a, we have a, we have a policy on how we sell our stuff.
Okay, so it does help to bring in at least some revenue while we get.
Oh, of course, yep.
And the funds go to C N R E?
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution, uh, for Agenda item 8.2? Motion by Council Moran, second by Council Noonan, is there any further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call, Council Shay?
Aye.
Council Noonan? Council Utecheck?
I'm, Council Moran?
Aye.
I'm also, aye, that passes unanimously. Thank you, and then item 8.3, these appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. All right?
Sure, um, so, Councilor Shay and I are, uh, obviously rather responsible for filling vacancies on boards and commissions, obviously always, um, looking for interested residents to reach out, um, most pressing, we have vacancies on the HDC, um, and several people who have expressed interest, um, I reached out, we emailed to Councilor Shay this morning, um, and we'll try to, uh, coordinate, um, meeting and, uh, getting those vacancies filled as soon as possible.
Do you think, um, our next meeting is June 11th, I think? Yes. So that's in two weeks, do you think you might have recommendations for us in two weeks?
Yeah, Councilor Shay, I don't know if you, uh, I, I'm, I'd like to, you know, move quickly on this, um, obviously assuming we're able to talk with whatever because we need to and that kind of thing, but certainly, I'm fine with. But certainly I'm fine with trying to shoot for June 11th if Counselor Shay is fine with that as well.
Yeah, Counselor Moran, I, I certainly appreciate you've definitely taken a lead on all of this. Um, I've been, I've been a little lax in, uh, in assisting in this. So, um, I didn't get a chance to look at that, that email today, but, um, I'll certainly look at that and follow up as soon as I can. So I apologize for not getting back to you, but I, I definitely appreciate the work you've done on this and, uh, and taking a lead on this.
Thanks, Joe.
That's it. We don't have any more recommendations for any of the other vacancies, right? Thank you. Any other questions about vacancies? So we'll move on to item nine on our agenda, which is old business, of which there's none. So straight to item 10, report the town.
Thank you. Um, obviously with some pretty big events going on in town here legally, uh, the electric blue specifically, uh, we've been busy with meeting with our town attorney. Uh, I've met in the past week with the liquor commission, the Connecticut state's attorney that has a part in the case as well as two of the, um, US attorneys, uh, involved in the case. My, my reasoning behind that was to express that talent is a victim here, that we also have businesses and should there be any, uh, federal asset forfeiture, um, what is the, what is going to happen to those businesses? Uh, it is a, it is going to, it appears to be a very complicated case. Um, but at, both prosecutors, I asked to keep the ton of talent in mind, uh, going through adjudication and especially in any plea agreements, uh, in regards to the adult orientated establishment down there. Um, obviously there's been some calls to have the, that business closed. The liquor commission, um, is powerless. Um, it's been, you know, a difficult, um, time with them. We had a meeting with them this week. Uh, their hands are kind of tied. Commissioner wants it closed too, but there only, there's only so much that they can do. We're waiting for more evidence. I guess that's where we are there. However, our inspection team did an inspection, um, this week, uh, in the blue and they did find some, uh, violations. Uh, liquor commission did an inspection, uh, this week as well. I don't know the outcome of their inspection. Uh, we, we met with the attorney today on some of those violations. Uh, we are going to move forward in the best interest of the town, uh, with that fire marshal there as well. Um, I'll, I'll forward you the email that I got from our building inspector. We should decide violations. Uh, the parade this weekend went very well. Thanks to those who participated. Thanks to the PCC for all their efforts, um, in doing that and cert and public safety. Uh, everyone did, does such a great job. However, um, we're going to meet next year, um, next Aprilish and look at maybe some, uh, better programming and moving the stage from the back of Parker's, Parker, I don't know. And do you have any idea why it's there, Chair? Neither do I. I'm sure there is a good reason, so, but if there isn't, I'd love to move it somewhere where all the kids and the, and the families are. I, I confound it as to why it's down there. Um, thanks to the federal magistrate and mayor, uh, parish for, uh, hosting the ceremony, uh, and everyone on that participated in it. And we had good weather, um, lots of heat, lots of candy. Um, the art planner has been assisting and spending many of these issues that I've, that I brought up before, uh, especially with the electric blue and some of the ord, the ordinance stuff he's working through and, and any sort of, uh, action that we have moving forward and regular meetings with our attorney, we will be, obviously often. It's been going really well with the new librarian in the library. We also, um, Megan Masa got a grant for the library around 20 grand. You know, again, we wanted to have, um, some electronic improvements, uh, down there, both the audio and visual for some of the pro, the programs that they have down there would be available online. Should there be an occasional town meeting there as well, that, that, uh, the acoustics and video will be improved as well. Um, that's moving forward. We met with, um, the foundation. Yep. And, uh, I told them the good news about the grant and that we might be asking for them to back up, um, some funding as well, depending on where it goes. Uh, there, so Megan did a, did a great job. While we're on Megan, um, you know, the steep stuff and thank you too, uh, for finding that. We, you know, we had our pickleball courts up at Heron Cove have been stalled, uh, as we've awaited stuff from, uh, steep. And apparently it is just a snap, uh, the steep never, or the state never got us, uh, what we needed, but they have now. Uh, we also notified, um, CROG and CROG notified all the other towns. As many towns were having the same problems we did. So good job by, uh, Megan and, and Chair Stargarder for, for sniffing that stuff out. Uh, DBW, uh, remains busy. Obviously all the fields, uh, in full effect, um, they've been monitoring the bridge down on 74 where there's a road closure. You know, there's a lot of events, you know, a lot of bike rides and motorcycle rides, even the parade planning for that. We needed to, um, just stay on top of everything that's going on with that. There was some congruent highway work at night where they were closing down part of the highway, which is really jacking up traffic here overnight. Uh, DPW met with, um, DOT and they immediately, uh, corrected that as there was some miscommunication. Uh, they didn't know the two were going at the same time. Crandall's, um, is almost ready to be opened. We brought in a lot of new sand. Obviously making improvements to the lily, the lily crandall side where the benches cleared some more water line. Um, improved the ADA walkway down into the water, uh, cleaned up, just cleaned up. I've walked around with Bruce and, 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 um, Director Lappin, Bruce Watt and Director Lappin and just questioned, why is that there? And let's move it, let's get rid of it. They, they really did a good job. The garbage cans have been bolted down so they can't be moved or knocked over. Um, just so many things to clean it up. Uh, we look for, Bruce is going to give me a plan, um, today or tomorrow in regards to when the pond is going to open. We'll have some sort of, uh, announcement and look, look, look at that. Um, has to make it a celebratory thing. Those of us who grew up in Crandall's have such great memories. Uh, I do hope to bring that back to, uh, our kids here in town today. As far as the Connecticut state police and the data on crime here in town, um, and where that MOU is going with the state, I, I'm working with an attorney. Uh, I am, I am not hopeful based on a conversation I had with somebody from the state over the weekend. Um, but we'll see what we can do and we'll do the best we can with whatever data we can get. Farmers market went very, is going very well. Um, however, at the last ag, uh, ag meeting, they did reach out and they, they would like to hire, I'm sorry. They're looking for more volunteers to help set up the farmers market. Um, so I'll look at promoting that or how we can promote or get somebody to volunteer. Uh, right now it's basically falling on one person to get it all set up. And that one person's not around and now everything, um, it's just a lot of work for the ag and the volunteers. So we're looking to add somebody on there. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for the town manager?
I do, but they're not really paying to what you just asked. They're just follow up questions because I don't get many emails going on. So is there any update on, um, the firehouse study? I know it was the contract was signed, so. Have they started or?
Mike, any, any idea on the, the, um, firehouse study? I'm sorry, the public safety study.
So we're set, we're setting up a meeting, um, to kind of do a kickoff meeting with them. We, we went through the contract, we got it signed. So that's being set up, uh, possibly this week to, to start off and have a timeline and decide what, what they need to do and when they need to get in here.
Can I just request that be forwarded to a chair and a vice chair? And I have a copy forwarded to, because?
Sure.
What, I'm sorry, what are you asking for, Kaya?
Stuff comes up in the shared between the clock, this chair and vice chair.
Yeah. Brian, was there an email that was sent to, uh, Counselor Murray and I about this upcoming, uh, public safety meeting?
Not that I were.
Thank you.
No, there's some. Anyways, um, also was there an update for, from the, um, garden financial advisor talking about bond rating? I thought that's not the agenda.
It was pushed out to, to July, right? Lisa, you're still kicking around. It was pushed out to July. There, there was a couple of things, um, it was going to take him some time to interpret and he had offered earlier, but then Lisa, um, has her vacation as well. So when she comes back, that's more.
Okay. Just wondering.
Is that accurate, Lisa?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you both. Everything else is for petitions.
Counselor Moran?
Just one question. Uh, you mentioned, you're back at the state police, you were speaking to the attorney. Was that someone from the AG's office on behalf of the state police deciding sort of what they're going to do with respect to the MOU?
It's, uh, it's an attorney from the office of legal affairs, panicking department of emergency services and public protection.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
That's not how I gave you the negative vibe. It was somebody in the IT section.
Any other questions for town manager? Um, could you give us an update on signage for the upcoming referendum, please?
We're all over it. I obviously felt some consternation, uh, as we were doing everything we were legally obligated to. Uh, we, we are looking to do more. Uh, Scott has purchased, uh, some more signage and we'll get every sign that we can possibly have, the end that we have purchased out there as much as possible. We have a sign, it'll be.
Do you, would it be possible to give us, uh, the council an idea on when those signs are going to go out, where they're going to go and what they say?
We would likely coordinate with the registrars on, on, on those things. Scott will be back on Monday. He can give us a full update on that prior to it, or soon, soon as it gets better. He's back Monday, right? He's there now.
So signs aren't going to go out until Monday?
Right.
Is that right?
Is that, yes.
Okay.
As far as I know, I can check it out for you tomorrow.
Yeah. Would you, would you mind checking on that? Um, because it seems like maybe over the weekend will be a great opportunity to put signs out, especially when people come into farmers market, um, and driving about town. So I guess it's impossible to get signs out and to send council a, um, a plan on how that would work. I think would be very helpful. Uh, I got a lot of questions. Fire department, what was? I did see the fire department one on their electronic work. Yes. Yeah, that's part of their scope. Thank you. All right. Uh, then next item on our agenda is adoption of minutes. Uh, is there a motion to approve the budget meeting minutes of April 25th, 2025 special meeting? The May 8th emergency meeting minutes and the May 16th special meeting minutes?
So.
Mike, Counselor Moran, is there a second? Or Noonan? Um, there is a amendment to the minutes of May 8th. That were brought, uh, from the town manager's office. The draft resolution in those minutes, which I believe are, is in the very last page. Um, bullet point number one should say 4.57%, not 4.75%. So thank you to the town manager's office for catching that. Yeah, absolutely. So these are the minutes from the emergency meeting, May 8th. The last page of the minutes contains a draft resolution. And, um, bullet point number one in the draft resolution includes a spending increase, a dollar value and a percentage. The percentage reads 4.75, but that's incorrect. It should be 4.57. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions about the minutes? Uh, Counselor Moran, are you okay if we, um, amend the motion to approve the minutes as, uh, amended?
Yep, I'm okay.
Is that okay with you, Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Okay. So any other questions, comments about the minutes? We shall do a roll call vote then. Counselor Shay?
Uh, I didn't get a chance to review those, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Counselor Noonan?
Second, I'm not really sure. I have to delve back. Here as well, as well.
Okay. Um, sure. At this point then, I am going to call for a halt to the vote. Uh, we do need, uh, four affirmative votes in order to pass anything. And with two abstentions and only three others here, um, we will not reach the required four vote, um, minimum in order to pass this. Uh, so I would, uh, like to, um, ask Counselor Moran to withdraw his motion. Counselor Noonan, it's okay for your second to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Okay. And we will push these forward to be reviewed and considered at our next town council meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, yeah. The next item on the agenda is correspondence to council. Counselor Udocheck?
Oh, yes. We got a lot. And first of all, I think, uh, Sarah Beth for helping because there's been so many and there's change in things because now they're being screened, um, from the, uh, town manager's office because of 16 fake emails to see. With that being said, following that 4:25 meeting, council, 29 letters related to the budget, 12 letters relates to the historic district commission, six letters regarding town council decorum, one letter regarding backyard shooting, um, one letter regarding overgrowth and stuff. Following the 5:21 field referendum, um, it was requested the break of both categories. So we had 81 total. We had three letters that did not verify residence.
Sorry, get the point clarified. So one of the emails included was recreational, that complaint of recreational shooting in a backyard.
I meant background shooting.
Thank you.
Recreation shooting. Thank you background shooting. Thank you for catching that out. You're paying attention. 81, there's something on, so anyways, 81 letters total. Um, I guess that three going to be verified. Um, 21 letters in favor of a low budget. 47 letters supported more board of education but funding. Oh, chair. Um, one letter addressed in board of, uh, bathroom policy. One letter suggestion cuts the town. Eight letters addressing funding, uh, the community as a whole in the budget process. Two letters addressing council decorum. One letter suggesting getting rid of the parks. Which I, I'm thinking on that one, uh, you know, may not realize. But that's, um, yeah. So that's right there, 162 emails. Minus, what do we say? The ones that we're going to count and some were duplicate.
And what about communications since our last meeting?
Had a little bit of three.
Yep. So how many were consider, uh, hurting environmental matters? Didn't hear anything else, sorry. Maybe I missed.
Oh, there was one that recently came on and on the weekend. Excuse me. I'm going to keep up with them though. So if I missed any other, please feel free.
Good catch.
So many that it's, you know, I think today we probably have no idea. But anyways, it's great that people do write in and voice their opinion. And, uh, yes.
Okay. I have expressed, uh, questions to the town manager. And I, I want to just make sure that I'm now articulating that publicly, uh, regarding decisions to screen emails. This is a change in procedure, uh, that as far as I know, has never been done before. Um, I would ask the town manager, could you please write up, uh, what you've changed about, uh, the email process and emails to town council? Um, and, and have that for us to review and discuss at our next meeting?
I have, I have not screened any emails. Any emails I've got are gone straight to as well. All I did was block some addresses.
So I.
I'm happy to provide those to you.
Yeah. I think if you could, um, provide the, um, the change in procedure for how emails are being handled.
Yep.
Um, any change in emails being handled? I think if you could please, uh, we can make that an agenda item at our next meeting so that we could have a discussion about that. Thank you.
I just want to point out some of them were considered. So that's why they were. I, I guess I just want to put it in there. That's why they were. Yep.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor Udocheck. Can you, can you repeat that? I, you broke up when you said that.
When Brian said the entire council, why he was doing it, he was concerned that some of them were borderline on harassment. And they were coming from fake, um, address. And addresses people that weren't. And that's why I believe they kind of started paying attention.
Okay, great.
Sure. And I would like to make sure that the entire council can have an open discussion regarding any changes to communications between the public and the council.
We'll have to ask a question with it.
Yeah, but we don't have any information. I mean, we, I've asked.
No, I'm going to ask you questions about your, your bus.
Oh, sure.
What would you be seeking to issue with that discussion going?
I would like for any decisions made about changes to, um, communications between the council and the public. Um, communications between the council and the public to be. Uh, something that we put on the record, so the public is aware of what those decisions are. Uh, right now. In some decisions have been made that I believe haven't been entirely made public yet. And I think it's only fair that the public and the council are all fully aware of what those decisions are. And for the council to be comfortable with those decisions being made on our behalf.
I can just, like I discussed.
I think we could have a, but a meeting about it. We are missing a few council members today, so I think we could have a robust meeting.
Sure.
Conversation at our next council meeting. Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report. Um, just a reminder to the public that we do have a budget referendum next Tuesday. Everyone votes at the library between six AM and eight, yeah. And now we will move to communications and petitions from council. Would you like to start?
So I'd like to just address a couple of questions. I'll start with you, Mr. Dugan. I appreciate you coming. Uh, I see you often here in council. Appreciate you, uh, I was in middle school. Uh, in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, so, uh, thank you, that makes me feel very. Me very old. You are. Uh, well, I brought up those numbers the last time. Uh, and again, this is something that I. Want to express that move forward as a council, we're, each time we're trying to come forth. Um, standing behind, um, what we're doing here. I certainly have budgets that I'm in favor of more so out of the three. But as Counsel Moran eliminated last time, I think it's important that we all. Uh, try to be positive and stand behind, um, each budget that we're problemating. Um, if you look at the two thousand and seven. Numbers. They're pretty similar to what's going on now. And I wanted to include those as to look at the repercussions of such a slip, such a slide. Uh, in the four or five. Asks of looking at a referendum in the budget. So that's why, um, I included that. Um, as far as the. At least my personal opinion on rec- recreational shooting, ma'am, I didn't get your, your name.
Diane.
Diane, I appreciate. Yes. I appreciate you coming, um, to council here and, uh, just expressing your concerns as far as the. State regulations go, uh, for recreational shooting, I'm aware that it's two hundred and fifty feet from a roadway. And not shooting over a roadway. Which anybody would think that's pretty common, common sense. There are certain, certainly some things with firearms that happen that aren't so common. Knowledge sometimes evades folks. As a former law enforcement officer and a range, range safety officer, I personally. Enjoyed folks that took the time to practice, um, recreational shooting. Um, becoming more familiar with nomenclature of firearms, sorry, I have a fly around me here. More familiar with nomenclature of firearms and furthermore, um, enjoying their second amendment. Right? Which is further protected here in town under municipal guidance to. Uh, recreational shoot on the curtilage of their, of their home. So I certainly, uh, hear your, your concerns and, uh. I'm sure the noise might be frustrating, but.
It's not my issue.
Uh, and I think your issue, um, at least if I heard you correctly was. The regulations.
Yeah.
That, that may or may not exist. So I, I appreciate you coming and sharing those, but as far as my, my own opinion on that, as, as long, I think as long as folks are, are being safe. Following state police's guidelines and for the more towns, um, on their private property. Which is private. I think that that is, uh, should be sufficient, but. Again, I know that folks will have their own opinions on this and, uh, I know, I appreciate you coming and sharing that, so.
Can I just say one thing?
We have, you have a time in the next agenda, Ms. Thank you.
That's it.
So, um, I want to. People Brian said the memorial day for his success, beautiful day, permanent celebration once again. Did a great job, um. Thank you, Brian and Chris and myself, we walked together, we did so much better with Cam. Just way back. So thank you, Brian, for. Candy and. I just wanted to mention that last week was DPW, um. Weeks.
Appreciation.
Thank you, Brian. So my husband and I, as residents, we went down with some snacks and water, thanked them, um, for everything they do around town. Brian was kind enough as, as two residents to come with us and Brian spoke a few words as well. So, yeah, that was as residents, we did that. Um, I just wanted to put it out there, so thank you DPW for all you do. We don't really get recognized. And let me see what else. Firstly, the referendum is next week on June fourth. Hopefully it happens this time. Appreciate all the emails, but history shows. Increases don't go off. Unfortunately, the case. Brian's going, uh. And Jacob and I are gonna do a letter again together, um, to put out, um, to the patch in social media to support the budget. Yeah, so I think. And everything.
Just a couple of quick things, I just wanna echo, uh, the town manager and Counsel Utech. To thank the PCC for the memorial parade, I'm sure, um, I know a lot of effort and work goes into. All the coordinating that they have to do, but it's always, um. A great event for the town, uh, for a really important reason, uh, so I just wanna thank them for all the time that goes into it. Um, I also just wanna echo, um, Counsel Noonan and Counsel Utech as far as, um, wanting to support the budget that we put forward. You know, I think as we talked about during the last meeting, certainly the budget isn't. There's aspects of the budget that I'm not, that I don't love, but, um, I think it's important that we work together as a council, I think it's important that the council. Stand behind the budget that comes out, um, and so I'm appreciative. The counselors that are doing so. And again, next Tuesday is the, uh, is the referendum.
And, Dan. Counsel Shay.
So, yeah, I, um, I have a couple of things I wanna talk about, and I wish I was there because I don't like bringing things up like this. When I'm not there and I also don't like. Bringing things up about people who aren't there, but I feel that we need to discuss this. And, um, and I, I don't think it's, it's correct for it to be ignored by the town council. Uh, when so many members of our town have, have, uh, addressed it. And, and it's not being ignored by our town and we can't just, you know, quietly try to sweep things under the rug. For the behavior that's taking place, um, with our town council, and I, I speak specifically about. Two things. Number one is Counsel Buckler's text to.
Counsel Shay. Are you? By bringing up. A. Snapshot. Of. Actions or words. Are you, uh, asking the council to? Discuss this item in full context?
I'm not asking the council to do anything other than listen.
Okay, I would ask then. For you to provide us with full context instead of a snapshot in time regarding this particular subject item.
Wow, that's, I mean. We have to play games here, because we all know what we're talking about.
I'm not, I'm not.
Good game thing here?
Be to speak about the entire situation, what I'm not interested in is a single snapshot with no context.
I have a point of clarification.
Hold on one second, excuse me. I'm not ignoring, I don't need to ignore you, just give me one second.
Yeah, I'm not too sure what you're looking for.
I'm asking if. You are asking the council to talk about. This in full context, or are we just going to be talking about? A single snapshot with no context at all?
I'm not asking you to talk about anything, I'm asking you to listen.
And I'm.
I have the right to talk.
You absolutely do, and I am asking if you are prepared for the council to talk about this. As a full. Item in full context, or if. You are asking us to only consider a single snapshot with no context at all?
Well, I think additional context can be brought up by other council members if that's what they choose to do. That's, that's the council, that's the other council's choices, not mine.
Okay, uh, thank you. Hold on one second, Counsel Noonan had a point of clarification he had for?
So just a point of clarification on what you're asking of Joe. Would providing full context include reading word by word? Is that what you're asking?
No. I'm asking for a full context.
Okay, excellent. How full are we talking? I think that's important as far as preparation of said speech.
Sure, it absolutely is. Full context is full context. And if you aren't aware of the full context. And only wish to speak about one single item. I would ask you to consider whether you're prepared to learn about. The full context and have an open and public discussion about full context. As opposed to a single snapshot, which provides no context at all.
But in terms of point of order, we can continue on what Joe speed, right?
Yes.
As far as council.
Yes.
She goes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I had, Joe.
Okay, thanks. So I'll continue. So we all know that there was. Some discussions that were between. Democrats as well as Counsel Utech, who is an independent. And at one point in time, one of the.
Excuse me, Mr. Shay. I'm sorry, I am not aware of what you're talking about, uh, a conversation between, there are. I don't know, uh. Two thousand five hundred Democrats who live in, in town? Would you like to be more specific, please?
Sure, these are the Democrats around the town council, so Counsel Buckler. Counsel Moran and. Uh, Chairperson Star Gardner. As well as Counsel Utech.
Okay.
And. Basically, one of the comments was from Counsel Buckler to count, to action to, to all those that I just mentioned. Indicating a rather abusive and, in my opinion, uh, disgusting text.
Shay, our rules of procedure do not allow for you to impugn improper motives of any member. If you could please.
Whoa, 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 I did not say anybody's motive. I did not mention one motive.
You, you classified that as improper? I believe was the word you used.
I said, in my opinion, it's improper. I didn't say that that person considered it improper.
Procedure, you're not allowed to impugn that on anyone else.
I'm not impugning, I'm not impugning this person's intentions at all. I'm simply stating what I think it comes off as.
Please do so without your opinion there.
I'm, I am totally entitled to my opinion, totally. You cannot tell me, you cannot tell me whether or not I can dictate or not dictate an opinion.
Are impugning on. The, the motives of another member, which per our rules of order is not permitted.
I, I, I disagree with your interpretation of the rules, one hundred percent here. So for one thing, I have not imputed any sort of, uh, opinion, uh, attitude or motivation of any counselor. I'm simply stating a fact. And my opinion about that fact. That's all I'm stating. And again. We all know what we're talking about here. So. Counselor Buckler's statement. That Counsel Utech should never talk to her again. Which I think comes across as the exact opposite of how a town council should behave towards one another. If we're to function as part of a governing body of this town. We have to talk to one another. And that, that sort of attitude should not at all be condoned. As a matter of fact, it should be condemned.
Counsel Shay. Then speaking about the motives of another member.
I am not speaking about anybody's motive.
I would ask you to move on, please.
I'm not, what motive am I talking about? Uh, Chairperson, what motive is, what, whose motive am I talking about?
When you are characterizing. The, your interpretation of this text. That is imputing upon the motive of the members.
I'm not imputing anybody's motive. I stated a fact about a text, that's it.
Okay.
So stop telling me I'm imputing somebody's motive. I'm not imputing anybody's motive.
Please move on.
Motive am I imputing? No, I'm not. Whose motive am I imputing? And what motive is that, that I'm imputing?
Point of clarification, so just, just as far as communicating, uh, effectively between council here, I, I think. What, at least, uh. Not an opinion, but at least what I'm hearing, uh, Counsel Shay is trying to.
I'm sorry, you, it is not, uh.
I have a question, I.
Sure.
The question of clarification would be, would you rather Mr. Shay read word by word what the text is? To then therefore not deliver any type of opinion, rather just reading what Mr. Shay was talking about?
That is not relevant to my ruling.
And how so?
My ruling. What you asked is not in any way relevant to my ruling.
Well, I'm trying to push the, the dialogue along, the conversation along here in an effective way, and my question remains, are we able to? Continue with what Joe Shay is saying in a, in a preferred way as to read the text word by word or?
That is not relevant to my ruling.
And what, why not?
Because that has, that has not been, that is not as part of my ruling. It's not relevant.
What is your ruling?
I'm gonna move on because at this point, we are stalling the conversation.
That's, that's great dictatorship, I guess. All right, second point. Since you don't wanna talk about that, second point is, I, I also have to agree that. With all due respect, Chairperson, that our treatment of certain employees. During the budget cycle was highly inappropriate. And no employee should ever be dictated which words they should or should not use. When trying to describe something that they've been asked about. Um, I think, uh, I think that was a, a bad budget night that we had there, and, uh, I think we owe the town an apology and we owe. We owe members of the, uh. The, uh, the town government an apology for the behavior that was presented that night. Uh, and I think as a town council, we need to drastically improve. The way we are acting towards one another. And, uh, and the way we present ourselves to the town, because right now I don't believe we instill a tremendous amount of confidence. With the things that have gone on, uh, among members and within meetings as well. And then lastly, um, the discussion about the emails. I, I think it's good that we, we understand what's going on, but, you know, if there's fake emails, I don't think, there's fake emails that have. Been determined that, that people have been using fake email addresses. To, to write in and express, um, really opinions against. Can Counsel Utech, and I, I sympathize with her tremendously with the amount of abuse that she's taken. From, uh, from the Democrats as well as from. Individuals who have written fake emails into the, into the town, and I think it's the town's obligation to filter out fake emails. We should not allow those to go through. And if we don't have a policy on that, we certainly should. Thank you.
I'm your response. I am. Incredibly disappointed. incredibly disappointed. I think that this council is in tremendous need of some very cordial blight and adult conversation between each other. For example, Councillor Shea just provided commentary on my behavior. At no point has Councillor Shea approached me about that. At no point have has he while sitting next to me indicated that he felt one way or the other about it. When I have concerns about things that are going on in council, my first stop is directly with the person I have concerns with. Because having these personal outreach conversations is the right thing to start. If I have a problem with someone, I think the first step is to reach out and say, hey, I have some issues. Can we sit down and talk about it? And I am very concerned that this council seems to be missing that, that in some of our interpersonal relationships. And I hope that we can find it within ourselves to start having those conversations. Think, personal conversations, the ability to reach out and talk to someone is incredibly effective. And it's a great way to start addressing any concerns or issues that we may be having. I think there's a lot of room for that between the seven of us. And I hope that we can start having those conversations because they're important, because we are a team. And whether we agree with each other or even like each other very much, we were elected to sit up here as a seven-member team. I don't know about anybody else. I'm feeling a lot of team spirit right now. And I think there's room for improvement. And I hope that we can find a way to improve, because we owe it to the town and to each other. We spend a lot of time sitting here away from our families, friends, away from our jobs, away from other things that we probably be doing. I don't know about you guys, but there's a long list of things I could be doing at home. And instead, I'm sitting here. I get paid the big bucks to do it, too. So, the zero dollars that I make to spend every other Tuesday night with you fine people, I think there's room for improvement.
One where I think what, uh, Councillor Shea is talking about is improving said interpersonal communication. There's not a single member here specifically on, on, uh, at least the majority of council here that would even consider speaking to each other in the ways that you are waxing poetically about right now. I agree with you that I think that we should be polite with each other, not ostracizing, ostracizing each other based on one's opinion. And that's what often, uh, that is what, uh, Councillor Shea um, was pointing out. If we were in a tribe together, which I think we are right now, this is our tribe. If one member was trying to publicly ostracize and demean another, that person might sit out on the bonfire for the night. I think that's what Mr. Shea was saying. And I think it's important that going forward we, um, as you just said, speak to each other politely and not undermine each other based on our opinions. And so on and so forth.
Thank you. I agree with all of that, Councillor Noonan, but I, I worry that you missed the part where I said we can disagree.
Sure.
And still manage to have conversations that are not intended to publicly ostracize anyone. I know that I personally have made no attempts to publicly ostracize anybody.
That's good.
I would also say that Councillor Buckler did not either. And the fact that your, uh, your facial feature indicated that you might disagree with me, which is okay, if you disagree, is troubling to me and indicates the underlying problem that I was referring to in that we are not having these conversations in a polite or productive way.
Question, call it a question, because it sounds like you're, you're, you're going down the road of you, you want to open up a big discussion tonight, right now? Like, you're, you're prepared to bring forth all the examples and issues that you're, you're discussing right now?
I'm sorry, what was your motion? I didn't understand. I, there's no, there's no question in front of us.
The, the question seemed to be, you're, you're asking the town council about its, its attitude towards one another, and if it's something that we wish to, or we should be addressing further. I mean, is this something you want to start discussing now? Or should we be moving on, since I was shut down?
I think as Councillor Noonan so, uh, nicely put it, "I was waxing poetic." Councillor.
Um, so I just want to speak about some of the rhetoric, um, that's circulated on social media and private emails and messages. Um, especially that relates to incidents that, um, either make it to social media or don't. Um, it's incredibly frustrating to me. Um, because I just want to do the work that we were elected to do, and I everything else is a, is a sideshow to me, and it's frustrating. Um, and I just want to make clear that, um, Republicans and Democrats, um, have received correspondence making unfounded accusations against individuals who volunteer their time for this community, both elected and, uh, unelected people. Um, as I said before, even when we disagree, I firmly believe that everyone on this council is doing what they think is in the best interest of the town. Um, but attacks that have been received, um, by myself included and, and, and other members on the council, orders on harassment and intimidation, um, they're not based. Often the messages aren't based in truth or, um, reality. Um, and so even though political attacks aren't new, even in our town, I'm worried that we're going down, um, a road that just further divides, um, the town. Respectful disagreement is inevitable and is a good thing when we're making difficult decisions for the town. Um, I would just encourage all of us, um, and the public to focus on um, policy and not people. Um, but when the recent attacks, um, they're inappropriate and they serve only to deter good people from stepping forward to volunteer, to make this town a better place. Um, and I just want to make clear that, um, most, if not all of us, have, um, been the recipient of these things. Um, it's my desire to do what's important, which is the work that's before us. Um, I don't view what we do here as being about me, but being about what's good for the town. Um, and it's incredibly frustrating, um, the division. Um, and I just, my hope is that we can work together as council, um, and disagree respectfully, as I've said in prior meetings.
Thank you.
So on that basis, are we denouncing the message that Jeff Buckler sent to Colleen Uticek here in council?
I'm sorry. Are you asking a question?
Was it about my, my remarks or?
It's in general.
I don't have an answer to it.
Chris?
I was speaking about all of the, um, negative, um, attacks that have been received. Um, it's, it's, we're all volunteers. That's what I'm talking about. And no
Cause I would have to agree with you. And I'm not sure. I don't know if Jacob is present tonight. I think he, I don't think he's on, uh, even via message, but, um, our chair doesn't have a comment, which I wish she would, speaking in, uh, general terms here. I'm sure, um, Colleen has, um, something to say about, to denouncing all that and saying
Just a point of clarification of my comment.
I'm gonna take it.
I just wanted to, uh, so I, I, I hear what Councillor Noonan is saying. I just want to make clear that I'm talking about attacks that we've all received, right? We've been, that's, and I'm not excluding anything. I'm just saying, I'm speaking about that as a whole. I just want to be clear.
Well, we've seemed to have lost our chair for the moment. I don't know. Next agenda item is for a moment to come back.
I'm sorry, guys, I have to go.
Motion for recess, or? What was the next item?
Well, we have public, public
Maybe, um, motion for a recess, and maybe we can get Jacob on the phone just to finish. If we can't, so
I'm sure
I would have to maybe ask
We could sit here and move the meeting forward.
Well, we can't vote everything. I, I'm not sure. And I don't know if you have been on the chair or vice chair in the present for a meeting. The town, but maybe answer, or I could try Jacob or Alex. Try Jacob.
Say, we, we're so close to the end here.
Yeah, let's, can we just, um, can we just finish fishing up with who we have?
Yeah, I, I believe that we can, and if not, we'll come back and revisit it.
Okay.
Right now. But I recommend, who is the senior person here? That you, that's, you're probably correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion. This is as chair, that you want to go to.
We Yeah, I'm sorry, Ken. Since Colleen is the most senior, could we make a motion just to, to recommend she act as chair for the remainder of the meeting?
Hold on, Joe. Um, I believe now that it comes back to me, I believe Brian takes over the meeting because he's I think that's what's asked me by the meeting.
I'll take that chance, um, if that's fine.
Yes.
Before I do, uh, thoughts on that, Chris? Thoughts on that, Alex? Sounds good, Colleen.
Yep, that's, I believe, what's happened with
Joe.
This
Yeah, let's, let's move it on.
Is that it for public participation?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is that it for, for communications petitions from council? Anything else like that? Okay. Moving on to item number fifteen, public participation. Anyone from in the room or online, if you're online, raise your hand and we'll let you in. Uh, I'll start here within the room first.
I just wanted to respond to Councillor Noonan.
Sure, come on up here and state your name and address again, please, sir.
Diana Mears, three hundred Plains Road. First of all, I feel very anticlimactic after everything that's going on, but I have the utmost respect for everyone who volunteers their time for the town. I don't disagree with anything that you said, and I don't think anything I said was going against anyone's Second Amendment rights. I have no problem with the people owning their beloved guns, practicing with their beloved guns. What baffles my mind is that you need a permit to put a deck on your house. You need a permit for a shed. You need a permit for a pool, but you can build a damn shooting range with no permit. Does that make sense to you?
So are you asking for a permit?
I'm asking you, yes, I'm asking, could we consider a permit process? I mean, I don't find that to be laughable or outrageous. I mean, you need a permit for every other darn thing you do on your property. Why is that so outrageous? This is, um, I, well, I say the wrong video of what it's like to sit in my backyard. I mean, it's like, you know, and I know that people have to practice with their guns, but you know, if you had a permit process, then maybe there could also be like, I don't know, Sundays or something, so people could, my grandchildren can play in my yard and not run in the house and say, Grandma, somebody's shooting out in the woods. You know, I mean, we all have, not just in the woods, we all have, all pay our property taxes. I just don't see why it's such an infringement on the rights of a gun owner to have a permit to build a shooting range.
Thank you. Uh, any, anyone online looking for, uh, public listed participation? Any, any subject matter within the jurisdiction of town council? Raise your hand, Claudette Morehouse.
Uh, good evening again. Claudette Morehouse, eight and nine Merlot Way. This meeting is about as painful to watch as the last one, the six-hour meeting. There's discussions to be had, and I, I do appreciate everybody who stepped up to volunteer to do what's best for the town. But it's all in how you do it, decorum. And it was these same people that sat in judgment of the, of the, um, historic district committee. How can they judge other people when the decorum of this board is, is worse off? When you have a chairperson who is a, a topic of conversation, silencing another town council member for speaking up is deplorable. I'm almost ashamed. These people should not be representing our town. This is not what we voted for. We want a committee that's going to serve all of Talon. And to stop this, this going back and forth and this, 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 even if it's a text message or an email, it's public knowledge. And this is not who we are. Is this is who we become? Y'all might have, you know, doing what's best for the town, but it's all in how you do it, and this is not how you do it. We can, we can be better. Again, you can't be judging other boards. You need to clean up your own house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, moving back to the room. Anyone, anyone in the room have, uh, want to say anything for public listed participation on any subject matter within jurisdiction of town council?
Dennis Teagan, six eighty-nine Talon State Road. I have a lot to say about all this, but it, it seems inappropriate tonight, quite honestly, in light of where we are. But let me first of all, thank you for, I didn't even know there was a section in, in the agenda where the members of the council could actually respond to information or questions that, that participants ask. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, and I hope with my next comment, you hope, you will feel differently about that, but my, what I was referring to is not just the fact there might have been X number of votes, but, but two things, I guess, and I'm I'm into, when I'm into things, I'm into detail, but the details of the budget, what were the differences then versus now, that kind of thing. But then on top of that, the economic situation of the time in seven and eight was dramatically different than where we are today. So I was, I was not trying to be critical. I was just trying to say that, uh, in trying to put together a really honest, fair budget, um, it, it's not always just this bottom line number. Obviously, sometimes you have to think that way, but then decide how you get there, that kind of thing. But as far as everything that happened tonight, again, there's other things I'd love to say, but I think, um, it'd probably a better time, another time. Um, other than my only comment would be, uh, my reaction, uh, and again, I've only lived in a corporate world. I've not been in government or government role, is that things that took place tonight, in my view, quite honestly, uh, should have at least started in a, uh, private session with all of you, quite honestly. Um, and that if in fact Um, and that if in fact, in a private session, it can't be worked out and you feel it's necessary to spill over, so be it. But there, there are things that were not very good about what took place over the last X number of months, right? And some of whom included just members up here and some of them included, as this last caller suggested, uh, to individuals outside this council and, and commissions and boards, et cetera. It was totally inappropriate. There's a lot of inappropriate stuff going on, right? But I think minimally, it would be great as a result of what happened tonight, if the seven of you can just get in a room and try to figure something out, you know? And after that, if it can't happen, then you come out here and you're saying, we just can't live with each other. So we're going to be miserable with everyone. You know what I mean? But at least be open and honest, have beauty, but get together, right? It would, it would be life's too short and there's too many important things that need to be dealt with in this town to deal with.
Moving back, thank you. Uh, moving back to online, Christina Ford.
Hey again, guys. Christina Plord, one oh one Metcalf Road. Uh, for those of you left in the room and online, thank you for staying. Uh, I was just thinking in terms of when I was new, I've read the, you know, Roberts Rules for Dummies book and just to empower, no offense to Mr. Foley, he's running a great meeting, but to empower you guys to move forward when the chair walks out or has six-hour meetings, you can temporarily name a chair for your meetings. You can nominate and run the meetings and move your business forward. Um, and continue to vote if you have a quorum. Um, so I, I hope that empowers you guys all to do that in the future. So thank you for staying and continuing the meeting.
Thank you. Back to the room, anybody in the room? All right, no, seeing no one. Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, George, come on forward.
All right, George Overch, thirty-six Fishing Game Road. I have to agree with that. I think things are getting really out of hand and not naming names, but I think he lives an agitator and we need to all work together. Send everybody's. I, uh, I'm an independent because I only like, like some of whatever these ideas are. So that's why I vote the way I vote, uh, so I don't really care whether you're a Democrat or a Republican. Need to work together, uh, agitate and listen to everybody and try to keep calm. I've been doing this most of my life. I've been here longer than most of you have been alive, even you. Well, you look like the oldest one still left.
Why, thank you. My gracious.
But not anywhere near as old as I, so let's just try to get together and work together.
Thanks, George. All right, moving back to online, anyone wishing to speak on public participation? Back to the room, anybody? Seeing none. Move on to item number sixteen, which is adjourned, do you make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you, we're adjourned.